All right. Gentlemen, we're good? Gentlemen, everybody's here, we're gonna begin the meeting. I will call on order the Wednesday, August 18th, meeting of Norbert for our council at 7:30 PM.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. Ms. Bryant, would you call the roll, please?
Sure, absolutely. Council President Budrick?
Here.
Council Vice President Wiseborn?
I believe he is... I don't know, Jim, can you?
Please, sure, he's here, he is there.
Okay.
Council Member Bush? Here. Councilwoman McGreevy?
Here.
Councilwoman Panopoulos? Here. Councilmember Rickards? Here. And Mayor Lloyd?
Here.
Great, thank you. Solicitor Walco, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge, ladies and gentlemen. The United States of America, and to the Republic, whose stand is foundation under God, and business of the ready of justice.
Thank you. My comments this evening are it's nice to be back in this room. It's unfortunate that we have to cover our faces, but that is what we must do. And we will try to execute all of this business as quickly as possible. Ms. Mayor, do you have a report?
Just briefly today, thank you everyone for attending the office meeting. It's been a quiet month in the borough. Just a reminder to folks to please make sure your sidewalks are clear of overgrown brush and debris. And that you clear overgrown brush from street signs or that may be blocking drivers' views or even walkers' views. That's number one. There's not a whole lot of activity happening in August, but in September, we have a number of events coming up. And we're starting to get the ball rolling with the Business Association. So, look forward to a number of events, including our first music festival back on November 12th. So, we're looking forward to outside events starting again in a little bit.
All right, thank you very much. Now is the time in the meeting when we will accept public comment. If you are here in the room, we'll start there. Mr. Spear, how would you like best for that individual to have their audio on the owl? Maybe have them come forward, or?
I don't know if it's up to me, but that would make more sense if they came forward.
Yeah, so if you have something you would like to say to council, if you could, and you're able to come forward, and just sort of right near the hand sanitizer bottle, you could speak to us, then I think that audio will collect appropriately. Going down the line, first row, second row, third row, hearing none, I'll go to public comment on the zoo. Are there any public comments from members who are called in electronically? Do they need?
May I make a public comment?
There you go, Cameri Scanlon.
First of all, my situation is very difficult to hear on audio. I unfortunately am not in Pennsylvania right now, so I couldn't attend the meeting in person. My public comment is, as Andrea is talking about making sure that sidewalks are clear, what is the borough doing to let people know that their sidewalks are not clear? As we've had such nice weather and lots of rain, there's a lot of brush growing on or bushes growing on the sidewalks. And I'm wondering, is there anything being mentioned to homeowners besides a public announcement to get people to clear their walks?
Okay.
And then, as then my other, I continue with that, I'd like to continue to encourage this council to place open space protection on our parks. Our parks are so valuable that need to be kept as open space for the future generations of Norbert. So, I'd like to continue to talk to this council about placing open space protection on our parks.
Okay, thank you.
And my third question is, I'm noticing in the packet that there's the legal fees for Cozen and O'Connor. What is that in difference to, is that Mr. Walco's firm, or is that a different firm doing work with the borough? And what are they doing?
Sure, I'm gonna, I know Ms. Bryant has your contact info, and I'm gonna let her get back to you after the meeting. And she'll send you an email with some of those details and answers to your questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Anybody else?
I have them.
All right, hearing no other members of the public, I do have a letter which was submitted. Mr. McGreevy, could you bring that to the table?
Yeah, this was submitted by Adam Kason, 156 Marion Avenue. The property 146 Marion is listed on Airbnb, 8869. The Airbnb 146 listing was originally on the map within Norbert. And this Airbnb listing moved its map location to Marion Station in Lower Marion. The listing is on Airbnb. And short-term rentals like this are legal in Norbert. They require legal proceedings to stop others from conducting these types of rentals. And he asked, does this continued legal activity have any impact on the council concerning to the extension requested by the owner?
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bryant, I believe the office is aware of this, is that correct?
Yes, that's right, and actually, yesterday, a notice of violation was sent to the property owner.
Thank you. So, I thank Mr. Kason for sending in his message. And Airbnbs are not permitted in the borough by ordinance. And it seems likely that you as the neighbor would know first, you know, seeing exactly what's happening near your property. And you should feel free to reach out to the office if you do see something, and it will be investigated. And being as it is not legal, it will be pursued. All right, I will close public comment, and we will move to the presentation for 3 Elmwood Avenue, 6A on the agenda. Mr. Frumholt?
Thank you, Chairman Budrick, good evening. Fred Frumholt, I'm here this evening on behalf of the owner applicant of 3 Elmwood Avenue. Can I be heard by everyone who needs to hear me at this point?
You can, and in fact, we're going to just ask the two council members here to move so they can see. And actually, if you could move your drawing down, I think they will appear on the camera. And we'll try and make this audiovisual presentation work.
Are they just wanting to try to move it to the table or something?
That's right, the tables are wheeled.
Can we just look at the TVs right here for a second, get in?
There you go.
While Mr. Panzak is setting up some of these boards so they can be seen, I just wanted to make a few introductory remarks. The first being, I want to thank you again for the opportunity to come and make this presentation to you at a caucus meeting. I know when we were here before you last, there was a question before you as to whether we would be permitted additional time beyond what was then your full meeting to present to you. And perhaps you're not considering this as caucus as such tonight, but it's, we would look at this as a practical caucus meeting since there is no vote that we're asking you to take tonight. But to present to you our plans and to obtain your feedback. As you know, this has, this application has some history to it. Not all that long ago, we were before you, as well as Lower Marion Township, seeking your approval of a tentative sketch plan. And both the Borough Council and Commissioners in Lower Marion Township approved a tentative sketch plan for this particular property because it's located partially in Lower Marion Township and partially in the borough. And both bodies were required to provide approval. And you approved the tentative sketch plan with the number of units that are shown on the plan. And this preliminary plan is consistent in all respects with that tentative sketch plan. Provides additional information that you will be considering and we'll discuss with you tonight. We had appeared before both the Lower Marion Township Planning Commission, as well as the Norbert Planning Commission, on the preliminary plan, which is prepared in a manner to satisfy all of the conditions that were imposed by you, as well as the Commissioners in Lower Marion Township, on the tentative sketch approval. We appeared before the Norbert Planning Commission on a couple of occasions. And when we were last there, they voted to recommend to you to deny the plan. They were, I think, principally concerned with what was viewed as a stormwater management waiver. And we had presented the application as a waiver based on feedback that our engineer had received from the borough's engineer. But we can discuss later, I don't believe it is a waiver. I believe that no waiver is required for that. But nonetheless, stormwater management is a concern, as other matters were. Mr. Bressi had prepared a memorandum of the Planning Commission to you, in which he had listed a number of concerns of the Planning Commission. What we would like to do tonight is to address those concerns. But before we do, with each of the presenters, we would like to be sure that you understand the plan as we had prepared it and presented it. Because we think it's an excellent plan and in the best interest of the borough. We have certainly noted all of the concerns of the Planning Commission, as well as members of the public, on which I think some of the Planning Commission's concerns were based. And we think we've addressed them, and we're prepared to address them. But we do not want to address them and modify our plans before we present the plans to you. And you have the opportunity to provide your views on the views that have been expressed by others, by the Planning Commission, by members of the public. So, what I would like to do is turn this over to our experts to describe to you our plans. We have Chris Yon, our civil engineer, who you know from other matters, as well as Bern Panzak, our landscape architect, Mr. Tavani is our traffic engineer, and Mr. Hertz is the architect who has designed the homes that are proposed for this site. So, without further ado from me, Chris, would you like to take us through? And with each of these, I'd like to make sure that you understand what we have presented. And then, as a second part of each of the explanations to you, they will address the specific concerns that were raised by the Planning Commission. Chris?
Thank you, Fred, good evening. My name is Chris Yon, I'm the civil engineer for the project. So, try not to take too long tonight, we've been at many meetings for this project, from Civic Association, to the Planning Commission, to this Borough Council, the EAC Shade Tree Commission. We had a site meeting with some of them. But I do want to quickly go back to where we started, which was last July, was when we submitted a tentative sketch plan. That showed two multifamily buildings, five units each. There was concern with that based on the width of the buildings, both being to Lower Marion and Norbert. We then, after discussions with both units, probably revised it to three buildings, where we had a total of 12 units, they were quad buildings, with more parking spaces than we show here. I believe it was over 20 parking spaces. We kept going with that process, and through further conversations, you know, it was made clear to us that 12 was too many units. We went down to six, which is what you see here. That's what was ultimately approved for the tentative sketch plans. And so, through all that work through the tentative sketch phase, we really didn't have to make a lot of changes into this preliminary plan. So, the tentative sketch plan was, you know, three or four page plan set that showed just the layout. It showed appropriate notes and existing conditions. We now have a 10-page plan set of engineering drawings that show site grading, stormwater management. We have, might be another seven sheets from Blackett Thomas Panzak for the landscape architecture, for lighting. We have plans from the architect for architectural elevations. And so, I just want to hit quickly a couple of things that are different from what we saw in the tentative sketch. One is that the loading area was more straight in the back. You could see more from this ingress driveway. And through one of the conditions, we were asked to explore alternative locations, so we shifted it over a little bit, rotated it, so it was a little bit harder to see. But that was really the only, what I'm even gonna call major plan change between that and the tentative sketch. We did add a walkway here. We removed little patches of pavement where we could to add a little more landscape. But the buildings are exactly the same as you saw in the tentative sketch. The entrance and exit driveways are exactly the same. If you remember, through working with Lower Marion, there was a few pages worth of conditions of approval. And so, we went through all those conditions, we submitted a response letter to those conditions, to the Borough Engineers Review Letter, to the Borough Zoning Officer's letter. We did the same thing in Lower Marion Township. And just to name a few things we have in the cover letter, besides the application in P where the Loma approval from FEMA, a letter from rubbish trash removal, one of the conditions was to show that we could do trash and recycling services. We submitted the sewage pipe module exemption, a water availability letter from Aqua Maneuverability Diagrams, stormwater management calculations, traffic infestivity, extreme assessment summary, architectural elevations, landscape lighting, maintenance, operation plans, a bicycle pit at strain study, and the preliminary plan. So, there was, going from tentative sketch to preliminary is really a big jump in engineering. You know, and that's where we look at is the layout, the coloring, kind of being taken care of in tentative sketch, and we move on to preliminary. And so, through that engineering, you won't see a whole lot different from the plan unless you really look through the details. But just to hit the highlights, you know, this property slopes from the street back, and then it kind of angles towards the creek. And so, both the entrance and ingress driveways drain away from East Windwood Road. They go to the parking lot, and then there are two locations where there's a break in the curb where that runoff drains into a rain garden in the rear. Where in the tentative sketch phase, we had shown an underground system, but what we designed through preliminary was a rain garden. We also have any downstuffs from the new roofs are all taped to the rain garden. So, the rain garden controls essentially all of the new impervious area from the site. The exception are a couple of walkways over here that drain out this way down to East Branch Indian Creek. I think that's the highlights of the preliminary plan. Do you think I was gonna go over changes now, or should we wait to have Bern and?
Would you prefer that we, Chris, just continue to talk about the possible modifications of the plan based on feedback that we received, or, in fact, make sense, let's find out?
Okay, so, as Fred mentioned, we did receive a review letter from the Planning Commission. And, you know, we've gone through that thoroughly and kind of highlighted some items that may have were asked for plan changes. And so, I'm gonna go through some of those that we're happy to do. One is an easy one, basically, the only, the only salvo or zoning issue that was really listed as a major item was there's grading above this wall that's steeper than 3:1. That's something we will easily address. The Borough Engineer and Zoning Officer's letter would essentially all look in five lines. Outside of those letters, the Planning Commission had other concerns. If you remember, in the tentative sketch phase, a typical project has right turns in, left turns in, right out, and right in. And in this project, we had already said that left, the left turn, that would be prohibited. Another concern, and Mr. Tavani can speak in more detail to this. But another concern they have is the left turn in, we are willing to forego those if that's what Borough Council prefers. There were concerns with maneuverability. So, there were certain maneuverability diagrams that we used, there's standard templates for that. And so, for passenger vehicles, we used a nine by 18 template, which is the entire size of a parking space. And so, when we, I'm sorry, it's seven feet wide by the 18 feet wide. And so, and it's a perfect rectangle. And so, when we run that, we make sure that you can get into parking spaces and get out and turn around without getting in. The comments were that the maneuverability diagrams were tight, that they were close to cars and buildings. And that's true. You know, there are some places where I could just tweak those to get a little further from a parking space or a building. And there are other times when in order to get more space for maneuverability, we have to increase the park area. So, we can increase the park area to do that. In my opinion, and what I thought would be, you know, a Norbert initiative, would be to reduce paving. And so, we purposely kept it tight. I've heard a Planning Commission member say before that, you know, and this was in regards to the number of parking spaces, that if you build a short number of parking spaces, then those are the type of clients that you get. So, if we build a smaller parking lot, then we'll get someone who has smaller cars. We won't get, you know, the huge SUVs that don't fit. So, we can address that comment by increasing the paving, I don't think that's appropriate. We do have maneuverability diagrams that still live at Rose. Another concern, which Mr. Panzak can speak more to about, but I can hit it briefly, is lawn areas in the floodplain. It's important to note that a large portion of that floodplain right now is already lawn. We were trying to keep a small area for the residents to go down there. We are willing to get rid of that if that's what Council prefers. And just keep a smaller boot area for residents to walk their dogs and also have access to the creek, which is something that we wanted to additions that the Borough Council had approved for that. Another comment had to do with, we originally showed the rain garden to a level spreader. When we did that additional utility information, we found exactly where a stormwater manhole is on the site. Basically, outflows down here near Elmwood Avenue, and is where it discharges to the creek. And so, it travels to a manhole at the bottom of the site, angles up in front of lot two. And then, as it keeps going in the East Windwood Road, once we found that manhole, we showed an overflow from the rain garden to connect to it. We have since found out that that could complicate your MS4 approvals with DEP. And so, you know, I didn't know that in the past, but now knowing that, we can switch back to the spreader to eliminate any of those MS4 concerns. One of the other comments had to do about the stormwater reports and when they were submitted. So, in dealing with both municipalities, we have two different schedules. And so, in Lower Marion Township, we're required, we first make a submission, and then we have to submit for what's called an SOPI date, Signs Out Plans In, which is 17 days prior to the meeting. So, we make changes based on their comments from now, the C committee, for that SOPI submission. And we send a courtesy copy to Norbert. And so, the comment was that the revised plans weren't submitted in time, but it really just has to do with timing, Lower Marion and Norbert. It was not the initial plans, it was supplemental plans, which the engineers now that time to review. Some of these other comments, as I go through them, I'm looking again at circulation, I'm looking again at the spreader, the grading, and so, there's more maneuverability, more eliminating left turns in. So, many of these are repeats from earlier in the letter to later. I know the biggest issue, which I haven't really talked about yet, is stormwater. I think the big concern here was that when you get into preliminary stage, one of the things you need to do is what's called an infiltration test. The infiltration test for, you know, the real easiest way to explain is you dig a hole, and you pour water in, and you see how fast it drains. Well, what we found is that it didn't drain. The reason for that is that the soils are poor, which is not unexpected near creek, that happens often. I had another project at Radnor on Monday night, asking for a waiver for the same reason. There was a creek that ran through the site, and it was a poor soil. So, that's something that frequently happens. There's really three main components, I'd say, to stormwater. One is the rate control, the next is the volume control, and then last is water quality. So, the volume control is when you get infiltration tests, they show there's no infiltration. Well, then you can't do the groundwater recharge. And so, that was part of the reason we switched to the rain garden, is when you do groundwater recharge, you're getting the water quality treatment. You are, the water is infiltrating into the ground, flowing through the soil, and getting some treatment through the soil. So, since we couldn't do that, we proposed a rain garden, where there is an underdrain underneath the rain garden. And some of the water that comes into the rain garden has to flow through that soil to get the water quality treatment, the same way that it would underground. Although, I'd say it's even better in the rain garden, because it also has, the rain garden is planted, it has a chance for the roots to soak up some of that, the leaves of the plants. And then, we filter through that soil before it gets into that underdrain and out. And so, out of those three components, really what happens is you get less on the volume, but you end up getting more on the rate control and more on the water quality. And so, one of the conditions that we agreed to with the Lower Marion Township was that we would provide a water quality volume for the increase in the 25-year storm. That is greatly in excess of the two-year storm increase that Norbert requires. And so, we are now treating the 25-year storm volume, and just in rough numbers, the 25-year inch per hour somewhere around 5.8, around six, and for the two-year storm, it's somewhere around 3.3. So, it's almost double the volume for the 25-year storm than it is for the two-year storm. That will, that will be treated by the rain garden. By providing that volume, we did not make this revision yet, we just agreed to the condition in July. But essentially, we're gonna do it in two parts. One is to meet the DEP Managed Release concept, is what they call it. And so, that is an approved method when you can infiltrate, that's a way to meet their delta in the two-year storm. And the way they do that is providing what's called internal water storage below the rain garden or system, where that water can't get out. And basically, it sits there, when the new storm comes in, it pushes that water out. Now, this is underneath the rain garden, it's not water sitting on the surface. New water comes in, pushes that out through an outlet pipe that is basically what they call an upturn elbow. So, if I just turn my paper like this, the way the water gets out is through a perforated pipe here. So, the water's asking to be pushed down into that perforated pipe, it's pushed up this upturn elbow and then out. And so, by that water sitting there, and this is more of a biological thing, that is not my expertise, the type of water sitting in there, over time, there's some biological component that helps treat it. It certainly pulls the water off by staying underground at that ambient temperature, but it also provides some biological component by installing a rock stream a little bit. So, that would be part of the 25-year volume, the rest of it, we would put above the rain garden bottom, which would have to infiltrate through those soils and out the underdrain and be treated for water quality. So, I think that's trying to say stormwater quickly, stormwater is a difficult concept. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. If you'd like me to answer any of those now, how do you do that? Or I could pass it along to Mr. Panzak to talk about the landscape.
Chris, did you want to comment just briefly on the possibility of losing a parking space about?
Yes, thank you. You know, one of the other comments, which I guess I skimmed over here, was some Planning Commission members were unhappy with the number of parking spaces provided. We think that this project is different from many other places in Norbert, where it's not all on the street that you can park, and not as close to another street as you could park as some of these other places. And so, that's why we feel... And so that's why we feel more of the off-street parking is important. That being said, we could lose another parking space or two parking spaces if that was also something that council felt would be required to get this plan approved. And in doing that, we would likely remove twelve and north thirteen. We would slide the loading space over and angle it a little more, which would also allow for a vulnerable water quality treatment.
And just to be clear on that, the point of our concern is that you don't have enough parking. Here, the planning commission was concerned that we might have more parking than is really needed for the project. We felt comfortable with the number of spaces that were shown on the approved kind of expense plan because it did provide some cushion, additional cushion for this particular development because of this location, whether to be a removal of space or two in fact of the lot, if we reduce the cushion, there would still be some cushion.
Go ahead, Chris. Have you altered the stormwater, sorry if you mentioned this wrong, have you altered the stormwater conveying at all from what was presented to the planning commission?
We have not altered it yet. We're looking for some improvement from Borough Council. What is, we don't like to spin this. We'd like to talk about what is the solution here. I personally think that, you know, in Lower Marion, they asked for a condition, they asked for that twenty-five year volume. We agreed to it. I think that in itself is more than what's required anywhere else in Norbert. I had another project that received a stormwater waiver maybe a year or so, two years ago, that has a much, much smaller system than this and much less water quality. So I think that is a big step. Whether there are other ideas that someone has that they'd love to discuss or have to discuss.
So I was looking at the level spreader, which was a term I'm familiar with. It looks like it just kind of pours the water out. Instead of the water coming in, it just kind of spreads it out. But it's intended to reach, like, green space. Reduce the lot of the, I mean, you have to for the parking, for the property, but there's not a tremendous amount of green space for this water to filter through. So, I mean, I guess I wonder how that is going to improve the situation other than not creating giant channels and green publicity. It's still the same amount of water at mostly the same speed in a mostly paved area.
So the level spreader would be an overflow from the rain garden that would be placed basically right above the floodplain. We're not showing any new grading or impervious or anything in the floodplain other than some of the improvements for landscaping and adding no-mo zones. So the level spreader, you're correct. Instead of having a pipe come out and just dump right at that point discharge source pump, the level spreader is turned perpendicular to that. The level spreader is perforated. It's surrounded in stone so that it hits that pipe, and then it has to bubble up until it gets to the top, and then it spills out more evenly across the surface. There are calculations that we can provide that show, from DEP requirements, to show basically how long of a level spreader you would need to reduce the chance of recreation of erosion chat. You know, I don't believe we'll have any problem with a spreader here. There's a, oftentimes, we design projects, we have projects nowhere near creeks. And so we're designing a spreader that's hundreds of feet away from a creek that's not near. Here, we're close to it, but we really shouldn't have any trouble with newer erosion being created in that place. But I think to your point, the purpose of this spreader is not to make the water infiltrate. It's to reduce the way that this water.
Council records or Council Vice Board, do you have any questions?
Nothing, thank you.
Can you remind us, when was the last point that the Lower Marion Conservancy weighed in on the project? Was it the DCP's plan, was it a prior?
So we met with the Lower Marion Conservancy on the site in March, which is between the tentative sketch and preliminary transmission. And that was one of the tentative sketch conditions that we agreed to was to meet with them before submitting the preliminary plans. And so we met with them on-site then. I know that they've been forwarded plans from Lower Marion, they've sent plans out to all interested parties along the way. And so I know they commented at, I believe, both planning commission meetings, the Lower Marion and Norbert planning commission.
All right, no other questions there. Maybe we should go to landscaping.
Thank you. My name's Vern Panzak. I'm with Black and Thomas Panzak, with landscape architects on the project. Thanks for giving the opportunity to allow us to present our project. We think that this project can be a catalyst for many positive landscape improvements. One of those would be the removal of dead, diseased, and dying trees along the corridor, mainly in the repairing corridor, but elsewhere on the site. And obviously, the replacement of those as well. There's going to be sixteen viable trees that will be removed in order to implement this development here, which is less than the twenty-five percent allowable that the Borough Ordinance allows. So we really are not charged with replacement because we're still under that twenty-five percent threshold. Although, as I'll get into in a minute, you know, we're exceeding the replacement of zero by quite a bit. We've also have been charged with providing a repairing buffer, which these yellow lines here indicate a ten-foot repairing buffer on both sides of that, of the creek. And, you know, that's an area where we provided a fairly intense buffer planting consisting of native shrubs and herbaceous material. We are leaving in place certain trees, or all the trees, all the viable trees within the floodplain corridor. And the rest of the, sort of the repairing story is there's a significant amount of floodplain that we're creating no-mo zones. This light green area is now considered a lawn area. This darker green area is where we're indicating that the grass would be allowed to grow, creating this no-mo zone within the repairing buffer. We're going to be supplementing that grass growth with the herbaceous plugs that I mentioned earlier. And we're also going to be adding the shrub materials in there. So that's a more robust repairing buffer, which is really there to filter water. The topography is such, as we know, you know, generally, the overland flow will move toward the stream corridor. And, you know, the filtration that's, you know, now being provided versus what it is today will be much more significant in terms of water quality improvements. We did a calculation today that indicated to us that we're providing thirteen thousand more square feet of no-mo zone or meadow than lawn. So rather than having, you know, this lawn area, it's now in a more filtering, more water quality kind of a planting. So there are additional tree plantings that I mentioned earlier. There's sixteen trees being removed. We're providing sixty-three additional deciduous and evergreen trees. So that's a forty-seven tree total over and above what we're removing. There are also plantings, as I mentioned, in the repairing buffer and also in the rain garden. There's fourteen hundred and seventy plugs that will be added to the buffer and the rain garden. And, you know, as Chris said, we've had a lot of meetings on this project, being in two municipalities. And we've attended the shade tree advisory commissions in both Borough and Lower Marion. We've listened to them. We've made appropriate changes according to what they asked us to do. And, you know, even down to the small minute detail of two trees that were planted near the Norbert sign as you go under the railroad bridge. Two trees were planted by the shade tree commission, and I believe the number of volunteers. And they asked us to either relocate those trees or replace them should they be determined to be unviable. At this point, we've added notations on our plan to be able to identify those. When the time comes, we go out, we make an assessment, and we either transplant or provide replacements for them because of the sensitivity of, you know, that volunteer action. We responded to conditions of approval that asked for a certain level of sensitivity along the streetscape. You see a graphic here. I'm not sure it's being seen by all on Zoom. But, you know, what you see here are the front elevations. This would be the view from East Windwood Road. It's topographically accurate, so you can understand that it does fall, as we know, from left to right. We've got the driveway, the inbound driveway, the outbound driveway. We do have as part of another condition and ordinance requirement in Lower Marion to provide a gathering space. We've done that. It's a garden area that is, we think, somewhat strategically located as you would come out from underneath the railroad bridge. You could perhaps agree to meet with neighbors and friends before you might go across from our side of the East Windwood Road to connect to a sidewalk that would take you down to shopping areas that are to the west along East Windwood Road. We've provided a wonderful improvement of the sidewalk, the full length of the property. There's a two-foot verge of green grass. A four-foot sidewalk has been proposed, or five-foot sidewalk. Five-foot sidewalk, sorry. So the sidewalk's wider, it's set farther back. And we think that from a pedestrian and even bicycle connectivity standpoint, that can be a significant improvement. We, as Chris said, we've met with lots of votes, boards, commissions on this. We, by condition of approval, we've met and we've looked at the pedestrian bridge at Elmwood Avenue. We've identified a couple of issues with that bridge, mainly the foundation, the gabion baskets that create the channel are being undermined. And, you know, rather than sort of focus on the bridge, we think there's some remedial foundational work that doesn't happen there. So I think that, you know, in addition, you know, we talked about the bicycle and pedestrian study that was asked for and provided. Our firm did that work. We analyzed a very regional set of aspects, looking at old studies that were part of Lower Marion's current planning. And, you know, we even got out on bikes and did some touring around the area and, you know, identified several key points around the area, origins and destinations, and then areas where there might be impediments to both pedestrian and bicycle trafficking. So I won't get into that today because I think there's a lot there that really is more than what we need to focus on here. But we also did, as part of the preliminary plan, a maintenance and operations plan that's very detailed, that spells out how this property will be maintained. There will be an HOA that governs the new development and all of the plantings and repairing plantings. And, you know, all of the features are described in detail, even down to, you know, maintenance along roadways and things like that. You know, just picking up trash. So, you know, there's a very detailed maintenance and operations plan that I think not many people have understood really exists. So that's something that is there. And, you know, you can all see how much work that's gone into this. So happy to answer any questions regarding landscaping.
Just a question. There's no public access to the creek itself, right? The public access is just limited to the eating space of the car?
That's correct, yes. Yeah, and Chris had mentioned this, sorry to just jump back. We did feel that it would be something that would be a nice amenity for the residents that would live in these homes. To have a backyard is what we were sort of looking at. It has this sort of oval of lawn that's near the creek, has a little access to the creek, but in general is separated from the creek by the repairing buffer. And then also, this kind of meandering walking path that we provide, you know, a place to walk a dog, are just really kind of passive exercise. But yes, the plan was that there would be no public access to this. There would be maintenance access that we would work out, but that would happen in this area. But it's not our intention to have that to be open to the public.
Remote council members, any questions?
None at this time.
Mr. Walker. The gabion baskets that are being undermined, is that the water is undermining those gabion baskets?
Yes, thank you, that is, no, thank you.
And that's in its current situation?
That's the current situation.
Are you saying you're going to regress those gabion baskets to three and four cent ridge, or is that a different?
Yeah, the gabions are not part of our, on our property. And, you know, it was not something that we had intended to do as part of the project. It was simply a response to sort of what can be done, what's the status of the bridge, and that was our analysis.
I have a question for the press CEO. So if, as usual, it's a very time when I can bring it back up.
Yeah, I think hearing the end of the landscape questions. So, Mr. Yon, we have a question for you.
Press.
Thank you.
I hesitate to ask you this because I'm weaving into orders, not, no kind of technical, or I'm not intentless qualified as you. You did our engineering calls out of your letter that designed our rain garden, and you did our similar engineering. You're fantastic. But I want to go back, yeah, I'm married enough. But I want to go back to what you were talking about with stormwater management because it's so complicated and there's, none of us really understand it. There's multiple understand it correctly, there's multiple different aspects of stormwater management. You focused a lot on water quality and the rain garden. I wanted to just go back to groundwater recharge and specifically section 441-55 of our stormwater ordinance on groundwater recharge. And just see if I understand this correctly, it's a tiered system, right, for infiltration that we have in place. So, if you have good soil, you have the capacity you need, this is called a net two-year volume, defined as the difference between the two-year storm after the development minus the one year storm before the development, and that difference must be infiltrated. And if I understand correctly, the infiltration testing and soil sampling and that shows that that cannot be done. The soils are just not good enough. Look, the riparian location means that that infiltration level cannot be met. Our stormwater ordinance then goes on to provide that if the soils won't permit that, then the maximum, you know, as much water as possible will need to be infiltrated with a minimum volume of .5 inches of rainfall over the impervious surface of the site. All right? That's what I read our stormwater, our ordinance. So, if I understand correctly, the minimum .5 inch of infiltration cannot be achieved on this site. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's what I thought. And I understand it's a challenging site. I also want to point out, when you did our work, you came in after we had sort of started our architectural designs, but you may have been playing on pause five years ago. We had had earth engineering solutions come in and drill wells before we ever put our pen to paper. We knew the groundwater levels and we knew the infiltration rates because what the site will support determines when it can be opened. So, if you do all the designing first and you say, well, the zoning was fine, you've been to a million meetings, everybody was fine, but then you do, then you drill the walls, oops, it could be a bad surprise. So I just want to point out that whether the preliminary plan, you know, deadlines require this or that, it's always possible to reevaluate those things before getting ahead of ourselves and planning a large parking lot on a, you know, on a site that simply doesn't have natural infiltration available. That creates a significant challenge.
So, I guess a couple things. So, you're right about the minimum .5, but if I could read that code section. It says, obtaining the R E V volume in 441-55 may not be feasible on every site due to site-specific limitations and so forth. So that's what we got.
That's right.
If it cannot be physically accomplished, then the design professionals shall be responsible for showing that this cannot be physically accomplished. That's what we did with the infiltration test results and the goals we were given. All right. If the goals, and then skipping to the end, if the goals from 441-55 may not be achieved and .5 inches of rainfall shall be retained. I'm looking for a different code section, Fred, because this...
Can you understand the code? If you can't, what you need to do...
I understood the engineering part.
I understand.
.5 cannot be achieved. So, he answered my question. I appreciate that. If you want to continue, Fred, it's fine, but I don't want to put press on the spot to do a statutory interpretation because there I got, you have me on engineering.
I certainly can address the engineering. I can just address my understanding of the code, that the code says, if it doesn't perk, you need to demonstrate that it doesn't, and that's your burden. And if it does perk, then you need to meet certain...
It also says if it doesn't perk, you have to get a waiver. You have to demonstrate, hey, well, it truly doesn't perk, guys, so we need a waiver. We need to apply for a waiver. That's what I read.
My understanding, and this gets a little technical... Happy to have further discussions with you and with Mr. Walker, that if it, if it does perk and you need to meet certain standards, if it perks, you need to do certain things. And if you can't do those things, then you need a waiver. But the waiver's only needed in a situation where it perks and you can't meet the standard, not in a situation where it doesn't perk. That's how I read the code requirement.
Okay. Any other questions from council members? All right, thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, excuse me.
Yes?
We were hoping to have Mr. Tavani talk to you for just a few minutes about traffic and even shorter, Mr. Hertz, just to mention to you about the architecture, which is, I think, always an important consideration for the Borough, that the architecture is appropriate. So, Mr. Hertz, if you could come up, just introduce yourself, and I think you can refer to the, that one Windwood Road elevation.
Council, hi. I have it. Obviously, at this stage of the game, with all your parts compared to what else, we're still what I would call a preliminary test. But we did come up with a definitive footprint for the building, so then Mr. Yon and the bands that could do their thing for engineering and site work and landscaping. And we did come up with some pretty definitive elevations as far as meeting some of the height, you know, the height requirements, the building plate, that type of thing. There's two units in each building. There are four bedrooms, three and a half baths in each building. The two on the ends, one has a garage and one doesn't. The unit in the middle, the two have garages. We're working on staying with that Narberth vibe, if you will, certain kinds of massings and, you know, basic shapes and forms. All these were done using that form-based zoning that's out there as far as roof pitches and what's allowed projections, building ordinances, they would, there's any of those types of things. The everything is, as they said, it's slight slopes from left to right, and we made a point of having stairs and a walkway that connect the main entrance to the units all the way out to the five-foot sidewalk, the zip pits out here. So we covered kind of as much as we could until somebody says, yes, you're good to But, you know, it is what it is for now, so that's kind of pretty fine. I'm at the end of the story. Everybody else needs to get free hold, long before I do. But if you do have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Or if anybody out there is human and has a question.
I don't see any questions from this table. Remote council members? I'll count to five if I can.
Okay.
Nothing from them? Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Good evening. My name is Frank Tavani. I'm a traffic engineer. I believe some of you may have seen me before. I've been practicing in the area for about 28 years now, something over the last almost 20 years. And I won't point any fingers, but when we had an email as a team earlier this week, I think we talked about allocating approximately 20 minutes to us individually collectively to talk and present. And looking at the clock here, I see that since I'm the last hitter, I think I have negative time to present to you tonight. So I am going to be very brief and not labor any of these issues. I think context is always an important point, and, you know, when it comes to my talented colleagues, you know, Burr and Chris, water is something you can certainly visualize, trees you can certainly visualize, and traffic for that matter. Traffic impacts talk about the incremental change, if you describe it as incremental, that a site will bring to an area as it brings more traffic. So, again, it's the context of what will this application do with its approval. As you heard from Chris, at one time we had as many as 12 lots and now we're down to six. It was small to begin with, but at this point it's even smaller, it's half the size it was then. According to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or I T E, a site of this size will generate about three trips during the A M peak hour, one, two, three, and about five trips during the P M peak hour. We've been here for the better part of an hour now. So if you could imagine three or five cars driving by the site over that long period of time, I think you would agree with me that's why not very much. And when you put that in the context of the existing traffic, which is about 800 to 900 vehicles per hour along Windwood Road, the difference is imperceptible. The average voter is capable to perceive a difference of five additional cars over a denominator of 900. In fact, there's a typical variation in traffic from day to day that's usually only order of 10 or 15 percent. So in this case, you're talking about 100 cars, which is almost two quarters of magnitude more than what we're talking about here. So, the context is it's a very small amount of traffic. Some of the comments that we've heard from the planning commission, as well as the Borough Traffic Engineer, I can give access, we started out, keep right out of the gate, not even bringing up the specter of exiting left turn movements. I was a little unsure about that because frankly, you know, I don't really think it was a problem that. As I'm sure some of you probably are familiar with and maybe patronize, there are many stores along the Lower Marion-Narberth border on Montgomery Avenue, such as what I refer to as the Narberth packing, where all turning movements are permitted at one single driveway, left turns in, left turns out, it's a four-lane cross-section along Montgomery Avenue, having more traffic than Windwood Avenue. And I'm not saying it's easy to make a left turn out of that site at all times, but I did it twice today, and it's never really been that much of a problem. In part because there's traffic signals nearby that create gaps in traffic for people to accept as they're going in or out of that site, which is exactly what we have here as well. In fact, we have a relatively new signal relatively close to the site, which will create opportunities for turning movements in and out. And that was one of the issues raised by Mike Schneider and Kenoni, the Borough Traffic Engineer. Speaking of him, he wrote a letter, day of June 21st, about two months ago. I responded the very next day with some detailed responses. I haven't heard back from him. I don't know if that means that he accepted the answers. I hope he did. We did share that letter from him, as well as my letter, immediately with PennDOT, as we were directed to by the Borough so they can be aware of things. PennDOT has a role here, as the Borough notes, this is a state roadway, so we have to get a highway occupancy permit or an H O P, which means that PennDOT is now brought into the mix and, you know, if heaven forbid anything ever did happen here, they have much deeper pockets than the Borough and the township and everyone in this room combined, and they would certainly be enjoying any sort of action. So they take their H O Ps very seriously. And we received a letter from them two weeks after we submitted my letter and Mr. Schneider's letter, and the number of traffic comments in PennDOT's review letter amounted to zero. They had my traffic study, they had both traffic letters, and they didn't bring up anything as a concern, which really assuaged my worries because, you know, I've heard over and over again about the concerns with access, which I thought were possibly overstated, and I think PennDOT seems to have agreed with me in that regard. We can read all of their comments, they're mostly just plain oriented, but we are here tonight with open minds and open hearts, and if there's a way that we can work in a sphere of cooperation and make some further concessions or changes to the plan that will make the council more comfortable, such as eliminating the left turns in, I think the applicant is certainly willing to entertain that notion. Again, I don't really know frankly what it achieves. If you have three or five vehicles entering in totality or exiting in totality during a peak hour, that's in both directions, we're talking about a restriction that affects one or two vehicles per hour, so it doesn't really have much impact on the recirculation or at the slate itself. But I think we're certainly willing to do that. One of the comments by Mr. Schneider had to do with the pedestrian environment. As you can see on the plan on the easel to the right, there is an existing crosswalk that does signalize the intersection. It's a rather plain crosswalk, the standard crosswalk, there's a way to enhance that with a continental or ladder-type crosswalk, which I think is something that the applicant would be willing to pursue, subject to PennDOT's approval, because PennDOT would need to approve that. There is even talk about trying to extend the pedestrian lead interval, which is a technicality I won't bore you with unless you're interested in hearing more about pedestrian lead intervals. But we would certainly be willing to pursue that as well, once again, subject to PennDOT's review and any kind of toward. So, I talked a little bit fast there, I'm not being recorded, so I wanted to... I'm not being synodric or whatever. So I had a little delivery, I wanted to make up for some lost time, but those were the highways that I wanted to hit. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Council members who are remote?
I have nothing.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Yon?
Yes, I apologize. When I was looking before, I was looking at section 441-55 A2C. I could jump too far now. You start at the first opening paragraph of 441-55, you go to the fifth sentence. It says, infiltration may not be feasible on every site due to site-specific limitations such as soil type. Next sentence says, if it cannot be physically accomplished, then the design professional shall be responsible to show that this cannot be physically accomplished. Seventh sentence says, if it can be physically accomplished, then the volume of runoff to be infiltrated should be determined from 441-55 A2. So we shouldn't have jumped down there. We should have stepped at that paragraph, because if it cannot be done, we showed the Borough Engineers that it can't be done. If it can be done, then we jump down to the next sentence. And I guess just the only other thing I'd like to mention, or just ask if there's any feedback on, on any of those, you know, potential changes that we went through, you know, where you say, well, removing some of the lot area, removing parking spaces, increase in paving to, you know, show more window room for maneuverability. We're hoping to make changes that will forward this plan, but if they're not going to be well-received, then they're not going to...
I appreciate you offering that. And you've done enough work here in the Borough, I think. A lot of the changes you have made, you understand sort of the design vibe and the considerations that we're going to be working on. But at this time, I don't know that I have any specific suggestions on this plan. But if they do come up, either through the council or through the planning commission who's watching this, we would be sure to press that on.
Thank you.
All right, that will conclude the presentation through 3 Elmwood. We will move to the presentation on 32 St. Martin.
Yes, thank you. So, I'll go through this one however you'd like. I think we're in a different situation with this plan. This plan received unanimous approval from the planning commission a few weeks ago. I had actually presented this plan, I believe, in May. We went to planning commission in May, we needed to make some changes, we presented it to you, it took us some time to get additional survey data, and so maybe I'll just do a one-minute presentation, and if there's questions, I'll come and have them answered.
Yes, thank you.
So this is 32 St. Martin Avenue right now. There's a three-minute apartment building there that's going to be torn down and replaced with two new lots. It's one building with a twin building, so a unit on each side. We did go through tentative sketch approval. These are the preliminary plans, which is the second stage. We will have to come back to final plan approval. Similarly, this product, this, the layout is almost identical to the tentative sketch. The only changes were those as a result of conditions from the tentative sketch to increase the parking area. Here, I think that was a comment from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, but we have now fully designed, we have similar management, grading, erosion controls. The, there are a couple of issues that were outstanding last time, where there are a couple of stormwater additions to be made. We did make those, but I think we have another one to fix, yes, but it's a will comply. I thought both the Borough Engineers and zoning officers' letters are a little implied. Another was, we needed to go to the shade tree commission, which we did, and receive their approval. The third was, we needed an arborist report for some of the trees to be removed, which we submitted. Fourth would be talking with the neighbor regarding this easement in the rear. And so as you can see on this plan, the driveways within the easement, as we go away from this planned easement continuing straight where the driveway curves over. We have been in discussions with the neighbor, in fact, one of the developers' teams met with him at the site today. He has an attorney, we discussed. I have some sketches, which I don't think are really relevant for this discussion, but I'm just going to quickly say that, you know, one of the changes was we wanted to improve for a few parking spaces, so that we could shift the driveway over a little bit to get past it. But we are working with him and hope to have that resolved shortly. And then the last, which was really the last one to come in, was the facade area. And so as you know, it used to have a table for the facade area, that table was repealed. And so we are now charged with obtaining the facade data, and we did get some from the borough, but there was some missing. So we had to send a survey crew out there to determine that. We did, we presented it to the zoning officer who reviewed it. He determined that one of those buildings should not have been included, because it was two units on each side. And so in removing that, the facade area was reduced a little further, we revised the architectural plan, presented it out to the Planning Commission, and figured out. So I'm happy to answer any questions, that was very quick.
Thank you for bringing us up to speed. Mr. Solicitor.
So we don't need to know the details of the easement, but it was a condition of tentative sketch plan, and will be to the preliminary approved, that you do need to obtain any of the easement rights to make this plan work. You're making it easement, you understand that?
Yes, and there is an easement now, it's just a matter of making the physical driveway match the easement, but yes.
But that easement agreement, it needs to be altered, needs to be worked down, and the boroughs and the local government as well, to make sure that it matches the plan. So we don't need to get involved with-
Okay.
I don't know whether I can comment now, or not?
No, I'll speak later.
Firework.
Go ahead.
Okay. I met with Mike Wells today, we talked about that. And this is the third time that we looked at the spaces, and this one looks like it's workable. So I don't have any, at this time, I don't have any comments, since Mike provided enough information, and we laid out what we saw on your, on the latest drawing. And you were going to adapt that to moving it thirty inches down and finding its way, so we don't have any problems with the sidewalk around the house.
So just so you understand, you're the property owner moving, granting the easement, is that correct?
Yes. My wife and I own twenty-six Sabine, which is adjacent to thirty-two, and twenty-four Sabine. Both of them have the easement, it's in the D. The way the D is written, it doesn't appear to change, because it was vague enough to look like it would work. When a property line gets crossed by a driveway, it seems like it fits the same way. So anyway, the latest revision looks like we take a little bit of the grass mound out of the back, move the driveway over, and the easement over, to provide three spaces, because it's a three-story house built in nineteen hundred. And I even had my reception fifty-two years ago in that particular. Anyway, just your information.
Thank you. Mr. Solicitor, what you were saying is that that's a private matter between the property owners, but it is a condition of approval that the easement exists and that it allow for ingressing.
Well, they would need to be able to have the access shown on the plan. If they don't have that access, the final plan, which is the point, won't be able to.
Mr. Yon, you understand that?
Yes.
Yes. Right now, I'm on my final.
Okay. Questions? All right. Council members who are remote, do you have any questions on thirty-two Sabine?
I'm so sorry, I'm just not able to hear it. I wasn't able to hear the presentation very well. Thank you, I have no questions.
Okay. Ms. Rickards?
Dave, none.
Thank you. Mr. Bush?
So that table that you were referring to, with like the little casades that we had to remove from our code, it seems like it was a real pain to figure out the proper numbers. Are we working on fixing that? Is that going to go into the, is there an updated table?
Thank you, thanks to this project or our, take it number four, that, but yes, that is a project that we're planning to work on together.
All right, thanks. Okay, we can conclude the presentation for thirty-two Sabine. Who's here to present for two thirty Dudley Avenue?
Oh. This facade is on loan here, if there's any questions for them, please happy to answer any questions. My name is Chris Yon, I'm here for Trinity Dudley. This is for the same plan as the previous job, this one is even easier. This is a two-lot subdivision with an existing house to renew. We don't have to go through tentative sketch in this, so we've gone, we can skip right to preliminary, we did preliminary, we're now in final. And so, you know, there's no new permits on, basically, we are showing the removal of a portion of this building to allow the lot line. And we have very short review letters that are also, you know, compliant, happy to answer any questions.
So this is a different subdivision, there is nothing being developed here. If they develop on a second block in the future, it would be a single, looking for a single house dwelling unit. There was some preliminary block, whether or not it be a family house, or whether it be two. And within that detached unit, that position, that condition, it wasn't able to move, maybe on the- within some discussions, some staff discussions, that let the coast be put in. And we're not going to constrain this plan, but when they do come in with that detached dwelling, that would not be land development, that would be done through the process.
And we did present a plan, second plan, the commission, and I believe we showed this to the council before as well, with, you know, what the current thinking is for that. For that, and so currently, we are doing a single-family lot with a detached garage in the back. But, you know, we need to get through, when our plan, final plan, we need to get plans reported at the county, we need the planning module exemption. We have a handful of things to do before we can submit this. So that is the intention, right?
Any questions from the remote council members?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just a request, just a request, Council President?
Yes.
If everybody, if everyone could please speak the way you're speaking when you're asking us if we have questions, then we could hear. But it's actually very challenging to hear unless people speak towards that little owl camera, or wherever the audio microphone is, to be able, thank you.
Sure, thanks, Bob. Okay, we will move to the consent agenda, just one moment. Actually, let's skip the consent agenda just for a moment and move to eight A. And let's put that on the table. So can I get a motion for the consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-one fifteen? Somebody? Give everyone a moment to catch up, because I'm jumping around. Can you say where we are, please, Council President? We're on eight A. Someone will give me a page number, and then pack it.
I think because the site didn't come through a, through a subcommittee of council, it came from the Planning Commission. I don't know if there's a motion.
Sixty-seven. I'd like to make a motion or second.
Go ahead, go ahead Cindy.
I'd like to make a motion considering the Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh one five, including properties, historical narrative, physical description of the historic district.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Council Vice Board. All right, it's on the table, is there any discussion? Mr. Bush had a couple of questions.
Yeah, so this is the list of buildings in the borough, complete list of buildings in the borough. And it includes the analysis of whether they are contributing or not contributing to our historic district. This is the work that the Planning Commission did along with consultants to determine which buildings sort of fit the definitions that we came up with in the historic district that fit the narrative. So I had some concerns about some of these buildings that I'd like to bring up. One is that there are some garages that fit our definitions of a contributing building. So a garage that's in the first or second lot layer, that was built before nineteen forty-five, and it's visible from the street that the house faces. Those are all currently listed as contributing. There's a lot of work done to determine exactly which garages, most of them don't, but there's about twenty-five or thirty, I think, that fit the definition of contributing. I'm not comfortable with including garages as contributing buildings. I think our discussion was primarily about residential, about residences. And I feel that garages are not part of the story of Narwhal as a railroad suburb, which is what our narrative talks about. However, after I had a conversation with the Planning Commission Chair, who's encouraging this to be addressed by an amendment rather than piecemeal. So I'm going to suggest that I bring that up again when we look at amendments to this bill in a few months, whenever our one point one version of this bill will be considered.
Immediately following the passage of one point oh.
Yeah, and then the second, the second set of buildings that I'm concerned about is a stretch on Montgomery. This is something I brought up when we were discussing the original maps. These are buildings from about Narwhal Beverage to Manhattan Bagel, if you're mentally walking along Montgomery. They were originally twins, but most of them have taken on commercial use. A lot of them look very different, they've been, but more importantly, they've been expanded to fit Montgomery. So instead of being part of sort of Narwhal residential housing, looking like residential houses, they look, they're commercial developments. And then the parking, the front facades, they're all reflecting what's going on in Montgomery. And I think our narrative here again is that, you know, we're talking about Narwhal's development as a railroad suburb, and we're not talking about Narwhal's development as a strip mall corridor along Montgomery. So I think these belong to a different story, they shouldn't be listed as contributing. This is from eight thirty Montgomery to eight fifty-six Montgomery, these are the properties I'm talking about. So I would, I'd like to recommend that those be listed as non-contributing.
Okay. Conversation.
So I actually had my shop at eight fifty-one and a half Montgomery Avenue for thirteen years. So I was, I spent a lot of time in that little area, and that's where the current realtor is with the- and it very clearly has not been changed, it's been, it was clearly a house with a rock. And so it definitely has, you know, you can visualize how it was in that particular. And that's right next to Manhattan Bagel, so in between the beer distributor, so it's kind of right in the middle of it. So I don't know, I kind of feel like you get a sense of what the place looked like, you know, based on the fact that it clearly was a house in a rock. And that has not been converted to, you know, look like a typical commercial building. So I think it's, there's a little interesting parcel there. I would agree that, you know, next door, where the Bagel place currently is, it's more of a commercial building. And where the, where the beer distributor is, is significantly a parking lot, and then just kind of a tucked-in building. I, they're kind of interesting structures, I think they're kind of interesting, they've been here for a long time. So I'm not sure that they're, you know, without money.
Other council members? Rob?
I, my only concern with the garages being listed as contributing is that it could be an impediment to ADAs, which is something I would like to explore. So I would be open to Fred's recommendations for that.
For it to be pursued in the next provision. How about as it relates to this Montgomery Avenue structures, do you have, I'm not putting you on the spot.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a firm opinion on that.
Michelle?
Yeah, I'll just echo what I've said about the garages, and I think that's a really good point. With respect to Montgomery Avenue, I'll also just go somewhere in between. I hear what you're saying, that in some sense, many of the structures are part of the story, you can recognize them as such. But many of them may have, at this point, been compromised to the point where they really have lost their historic integrity. And so I would just ask the Planning Commission to revisit them very carefully, maybe on a case-by-case basis, and take those buildings which have been compromised and have lost their historic integrity out, and even if there may be one or two that still, that still have held on to it.
Okay. Councilor Rickards, Council Vice Board?
Yeah, just Rob.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Bob.
Hi Cindy. Hi Cindy.
This, I appreciate this conversation about the garages, and I guess my, my question is, is that garages in the first or second lot layer, you know, by altering that garage, do you really undermine the architectural and historical significance of the attached property or house? And the question about, you know, when we look at ADAs, then I would think that we would look at that, how those ADAs could be fitted, if that's the direction we move to. But I am hesitant to touch the garages, although I see Fred's point very much so. And it's not one that I feel so firmly what they think I would oppose. I'd like to walk around and kind of look at it a little bit more. As far as Montgomery Avenue, you know, we really spent a lot of time looking at the economic development of our downtown. And as Gigi Alph said, we can't forget about Montgomery. To me, I agree with Fred in that many of those structures have lost what I would consider an architectural or historical significance. And it being a little more flexible would allow for buildings that would increase the walkability of that corridor, the economic development of that corridor, I think that's appropriate to look at.
And I'd just like to add that, it was my understanding that certain garages probably are already advanced from these rules because of the lot layer possibly. Also, it seems to me that the houses on Montgomery Avenue, like some, you know, some really probably do fit well within the definition of what these regulations are hoping to preserve. And in the instance where a property owner has, can make the case that I think the judge is picking, there is a provision where they can, I think, apply to make significant alterations to the structure on the site. So I think, you know, I guess I'd like to hear more from you, say the Planning Commission on this specific proposal, so that we can ask them to look at these and give us their opinion on each of these issues that Fred's brought to our attention.
I mean, my only concern here is time, we're going to submit this, this is going to be our list that the historic companies in commission is going to see when the submitted application, which is in. So this is kind of our chance to make adjustments to it before they see, that's why I'm bringing it up now.
Bob, did you register that?
Yeah, I did, and I guess, I guess I kind of, yeah, I don't, I don't know that I would like, want to give this particular conversation.
give this particular conversation short treatment because it's maybe something which, I think, my tend, my sense is that we probably would go with what we've got if time is the concern. Because I think, I think that we're in line now to be, to have a review at the Commonwealth level. So I don't know. I think I'm hesitant to just make a late, a late change.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any, any other thoughts or considerations on this motion? All right.
Are you going to pull it through or no?
No, just council. Thank you. All right, I will ask for a vote then. All in favor of 8A as it has been submitted? Michelle, you okay with that?
I am.
Oh.
I mean, I think I understand.
Cindy?
Let's get her handle.
Aye.
We'll go around. Michelle?
Uh, no.
No. Rob?
What about the amendment?
This is as ever.
As Fred's.
Okay. But we can do the amendment later if we talk about that.
Okay.
He says aye. Fred?
So we're not, so you're not intending to bring the Montgomery stuff into it?
That's right.
Montgomery, no.
Okay. I'm a yes.
Four, two in favor.
Four, two in favor. Okay, the motion passed.
I can't, well, let me sure I didn't send me involved correctly. You were both guesses?
Correct.
Yes, yes, you got my vote correctly.
Yeah, so it's possible.
And I think, but I think based on this discussion, the planning commission is definitely hearing our words to sort of spend some time considering this, all the points that Fred raised a little more closely. And even in areas where maybe there are paths out for someone who wants to develop their property or remove a garage, that maybe that could be more clearly sort of called out to us because it's an educational process for all of us. And then we can decide whether, you know, is that the correct path? Is it two-ownerist path and then we can go from there? Thank you. I'll go back to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to accept all of the items on the consent agenda? Something to say those.
Kind of move that we accept all items on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Remote council members?
Aaron, my only comment is, I'm sorry, is that we should discuss the advertisement of the vacancy, the vacancy, no, please.
That's coming up on the new business.
Oh, sorry. All right.
It's all good. Okay, the motion is approved. The consent agenda is approved. All right, 8B. Who wants to take that one?
Sure. Before we set up a motion for approval of this ordinance, we're not going to adjourn to a formal hearing on this one. It's not a selling hearing. But I would like to note for the record that there was a legal notice for this ordinance that was published in the Main Line Times on August 8, 2021. This ordinance was provided to the Montgomery County Law Library and was received by them on August 3 of 2021. And as such, this ordinance is in a place for council to take action on it if council sort of decides.
Okay. Thank you. So would someone like to make the motion? Michelle?
I move to approve the ordinance 1035. We're taking this motion with 198 on the way to the bridge.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGreevy. Any discussion?
So.
Mr. Bush?
Yeah, I had somebody ask a question about this. So this is a, just for the bridge project. It's for a bridge apartment for the, for the new bridge. And that is the reason I'm taking this. Really doesn't have a lot of other use or, you know, people are going to never sit there and argue. It's needed for a construction bridge.
With two portions. One of them is essentially a grading for that bridge department. In fact, if the property owner was to develop the property pursuant to its current plan as approved, they would have to do that grading that same way anyways. But they're not moving on that, so we have to move forward on this. There's also a temporary construction agreement on the side. And that is just temporary for, for the bridge construction process. So it's two small, it says two small areas on the road.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Remote members?
Aye.
It's unanimous. 8C, Finance and Administration, Councilor Rickards?
Sure, sorry. 8C, I move to consider the facility user agreement with the American Legion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Pananopoulos. Some background?
Sure. Thanking Council President. So for everyone's benefit, as you all may remember, I guess a year and a half ago or so, the Borough Council had the borough solicitor draft up various facility use agreements with recurring users of borough facilities. And the American Legion is a recurring user of the east wing of the community building at 8 Windsor, where the library is. So per recommendations from our insurers, as well as from the solicitor and also just general best practices for facility use, one of the things that I decided to work on early on in my time here was establishing a use agreement with the American Legion for that space. So I had a series of conversations with Mr. John Nardi, who represented the, the American Legion. And, you know, the end result of those conversations is this agreement that we have. I think it's an agreement that, to the best of our ability, tried to acknowledge some past practices that happened in that space while also moving those past practices more in alignment with where the borough wants to go with this space and where, you know, where the borough is now and where we're trying to go. It's an agreement that I could see at some point in the future us revisiting. But I think for where we're at right now, I think it's a step forward for the borough and a step in the right direction. And I'm happy to be answering any specific questions on it.
Are there any aspects of this that sort of general citizens would want to know or might change how they use the facility beyond sort of the operations between one nonprofit and a government agency?
Yeah, I think for the way that the space has currently been used by end users, I don't foresee any major change to that. I think the main changes are going to be between the Legion and the borough and how the borough oversees the use of that space and ensuring that the uses of that space are serving a benefit for the public good.
Okay. Mr. Bush?
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions. Again, there's an amendment to this that was offered. It came out of the press in the discussion. So the question is, how does this change how they currently? So right now, for instance, if you're doing a birthday party, you could, as of, you know, two years ago, you could rent the place from the American Legion. So how does that change or is, does it change under the terms? I couldn't understand the role of your.
Exactly. Yeah, so I remember when I first heard about that practice of that space being rented out by a private party to another private party, I had a lot of apprehension about that. Because again, this is a public space and it needs to serve the public good. So where the conversation ended up with the American Legion in regards to that is that the space rental would continue. However, the benefits of that space rental would be reaped by the borough. Namely that the proceeds from that would primarily be used for the memorial they prayed, maintenance of the war memorial, and maintenance of that, you know, section of the building. And also, we tried to specify in the agreement the sorts of parties who could use the space, help ensure that it's being, again, more primarily used for public purposes as opposed to private benefits. Now, there will still be some, you know, some of the private stuff, like a birthday party like you mentioned, would still be allowed. But again, the proceeds from events like that would be effectively coming back to the borough and serving the public good.
I didn't actually see that, but presumably the borough is going to be okay with the uses as well. Is that right?
Yeah.
That's going to be the ultimate.
Yeah, and so, yeah, the, I did review with the Legion their forms and procedures they have for renting out the room. And I thought they were, were acceptable procedures. However, something I'd discuss with the Legion is the borough has to have final approval on any use of the space, which is one of the terms of this agreement.
Oh, is it where I'm looking for?
Yeah.
It's in the passage about the subletting. It's the last sentence.
Yeah, we have to be notified in advance and we have to get, give final written approval to any of the rentals. Uh, let's see here. Yeah, I think Councilor Bush pointed out where.
Oh, gosh. Oh.
It's P.
We have a signed disagreement, so at least.
It's the last sentence.
Ten. What? P?
P. Yeah, go to P. It's the last sentence.
I only see ten.
One P. It's our third, eighth, fourth.
I missed that.
Page one or two of the document?
Right.
So page one, two.
Yeah, well, I'll read that sentence out loud. It says, "Permission to use or occupy the facilities shall be provided solely by the borough." In addition, it also says.
I want to see here. I'm sorry. This is, I'm going to make a motion. And I will accept responsibility for not finding the time to redo this carefully.
Is this a motion to amend?
I'd like to move to table this.
Okay.
I'm not necessarily comfortable with this as is. So I, I'm going to see, so I'd be liking enough time to think about this one. It's not something that follows the development of it.
Before I ask for a second, is there any reason, you know, it's putting pressure on us to approve this at this meeting?
I mean, yes. Well, I mean, I guess as a council, I do consider this several reasons or not. So the Legion has, I really appreciate they've agreed not to make any use of the space until this agreement has been done. So over the last two or three months, I know they have turned down rentals and have not held events in the space. You know, because they've been waiting, you know, to negotiate for, for a council to weigh in on it. So I believe that the council, that's an acceptable reason to reconsider tableing or not.
Okay. So there's a motion to table. Is there a second?
I will explain the reason why. I generally feel that the borough should be scheduling these things and not another organization, period. So then if there are conflicts of usage, they can be resolved early on and we won't be struggling after the fact. Oh, yeah, which we can improve as well. And then a lot of conflicting uses and tension. And I just think it's cleaner to do it all through the borough. So I, I would, yeah, I would like to, I will keep my motion to table on the table.
Right, so I'm looking for a second on the motion to table.
I'll second. And I also have a question slash concern for consideration.
Go ahead. Well.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, because we have, now the motion to table is on the table. So I would hope that, I mean, I think your, your comment will be in line with that. But that is what we are currently discussing, whether or not we table this motion.
Yeah, so one of the reasons that I would suggest we table is to give to more consideration is just the management of a borough building of this nature during COVID. You know, how do we refine the language to suggest that any event that utilizes borough space, which is in fact the East Hall, is consistent with safety measures, you know, within the borough building. So in other words, prior to, you know, I'm not, I want to make sure that folks are masked and that we are not, in fact, making money going towards the funds that Samantha stated by having, you know, super spreader events in the borough. I would just like to shore up in the time of a pandemic, some of those details.
Yeah, and not only that, but it's not just a question of the borough approving, but it's what users could be rejected before the borough or finds out that they asked to use that facility. And is that consonant with our Human Relations Commission's goals and the agreements that we've adopted with respect to borough facilities? And so I just, I just think there are things that we need to talk about.
Mr. Bush?
Samantha, is the office set up to approve? Or I mean, would you be ready to, to take on requests from people to use the space?
Yeah, I think so. At this point, I mean, being honest, we've, you know, shut down the use of all of the borough space A because of COVID, B because of administrative, you know, overheads or the issues that we've been dealing with. But I do know there is a, you know, community demand for use of borough spaces that myself and Michelle Carroll are compliant with on, you know, almost daily basis.
Okay.
Well, how, so how, how much of a delay would there be if we, let's say we don't do this and we put the borough in charge? How long is it going to be before people are going to be able to use the space?
Well, in terms of the east wing of the community, or middle, it would be, I mean, it'd be immediately.
I have a comment there.
Go ahead, Bob.
First of all, it seems to me like there's two motions on the table right now. And I'm not sure which one we're, we're in discussion of.
We're in discussion of whether we move to table this facility use agreement.
Okay. And then there's also a motion on the table to.
Pass it.
To adopt this agreement. Okay, so there's two motions. We got two motions. So on the, so I just would like to say about the agreement itself, I don't think it's a perfect agreement, but I do think it's worth. It's, I think, I sort of see it as a kind of a bridge, just sort of the next iteration. And, and I, I think that in terms of COVID, the borough needs, I think the borough needs to set the policy for our, for the use of our buildings. And because the Legion is one of our buildings, that policy would be, have to be followed by the users of that space regardless of what this agreement would say. So I would, I'm going to vote no on the tabling. And, and I'd like to vote in favor of this agreement. And yes, it will need to be fixed in the next, in the next iteration. It's like a, kind of like a, and it's, it's an agreement that I think has, has a, is, is it our, is it our, um, it's, it's, it's our decision how long this agreement goes on, I believe. So it's not personal time, particular time frame. So I see it as both harmless and also accomplishing something that we've been hoping to do for many years.
Okay. Rob, comments on this?
Yeah, my thought is just that delaying this one month is, is acceptable because, you know, in light of Delta, we're not really going to be having birthday parties this month indoors. So I would be comfortable tabling.
Okay. All right, well, I'll ask for the vote. All in favor of tabling this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I have two ayes.
Aye.
Three ayes. All, all opposed to tabling. That will be Fred, myself, and Councilor Weiss Board. We have a tie.
I guess that's me. My first break of tie. I feel like a one-month delay in this current climate is, is not the worst thing in the world. Gives a little breathing space. I vote to table for one.
Okay, the vote to table is accepted. We move to AD.
I have a, so my amendment was going to be about COVID. I, I believe that in our consent agenda, we passed the agreement with Verizon's. So I think a similar provision is, is worth inserting into that agreement. So.
Do you need us to make a council?
I would like to make an amendment to that. I had a, I don't know how it works, but I'd like to make an amendment to something we're.
I'm asking Ms. Bryant, do you feel we need a council action to amend that?
Uh, yes. So I mean, if you're comfortable with me and John coming up with the wording on it, you can just kind of give us a general direction?
So my suggestion, based on the discussion that Cindy and I had. So my suggestion, based on the discussion that Cindy and I had, and speaking of Andrew, was that, um, any use of the space is contingent on a COVID plan that is approved by the, uh, Emergency Management Committee, um, that they, they submit a plan for dealing with it, and, uh, it is approved by, uh, the Emergency Management Group.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
All right, Rob got it, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, ready?
Aye.
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 Great, uh, okay, thank you. Mr. Bush, that is taken care of. A D, uh, with his planning commission, um, but, uh, who would like to take that motion?
I move that Borough Council reiterate the preliminary plan for 32 Savine Avenue.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Bush, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
A D.
Aye.
A D is approved unanimously. A E, back to you, Counselor Pananopoulos. Anybody who's got.
I move that Borough Council approve the final plan for 230 W Avenue.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McGreevy, any further discussion on this issue? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
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 Motion is approved unanimously. A F.
It's me, uh, I have moved that Borough Council, uh, approve a bidder for, have referred stormwatering sidewalk.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Got it, Mr. McGreevy, um, discussion?
Um, uh, Mr. Johnson, uh, could you please, uh, speak to this project for Borough Council?
Sure, um, you're all, uh, related with the project, uh, this is kind of, this is replacing our failed storm sewer, uh, along our transit, uh, along yet the park. Uh, also integrated into, uh, the contract is the, uh, replacement of down sidewalks in and around the park, uh, using funds that were, you know, allocated towards that, we integrated two projects together. Uh, we received seven total bids, uh, and we have a little bidder, and we've worked with before. Uh, one consideration, uh, you know, for council here, we have the base bid, which is the storm sewer and the sidewalks, and we also bid the ad-alternate, uh, for the demolition of the scoreboard building. Uh, you have the option to either award or not award that ad-alternate, and it would not impact remainder of the contract, uh, whichever way you choose to go on that one.
Mr. Bush?
So if I could go into that scoreboard issue briefly, so, uh, originally, when I had discussions with the, the rest board about this, I thought that the scoreboard was non-functional, but I since learned that it is working, so I would, uh, I would suggest that right now we do not include that demolition, so we have a, a fuller discussion of this.
Okay, let's not demolish a working scoreboard. Say that for the rec, for the record. Uh, okay, so the idea would be, um, to consider this, and the office can direct not to include that ad-alternate. Okay, uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 You know, A G. Park rules.
I move that Borough Council approve first in importance number 1036 for park rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McGreevy. Can we get some background on this?
Sure, um, so the council president, uh, basically, uh, it was what my intention of the Borough currently only has two rules for the parks. Uh, number one are the hours of the park, and number two is a provision not allowing, uh, dogs in the parks. Um, so talking to the Parks and Recreation Committee, I'd sound like there was a desire for some additional rules in the parks, and then for some signage to be installed once those, uh, rules are approved by council. So, uh, working with the Parks and Recreation Committee, as well as with the Infrastructure Committee, uh, Mr. Walco put together, uh, ordinance that would allow council to set the park rules by resolution, so that way if we want to change the rules in the future, we don't have to go through the process of doing ordinance, we can just do a resolution. So, uh, this ordinance would allow you to do that. A resolution was included, um, just, you know, as a sense of what we're thinking about doing. Uh, there was one rule, um, left off of that resolution, uh, just a little oversight, and that was to not allow, um, uh, non-motorized bicycles to go on the fields. Um, so the, um, if you approve, uh, advertise on this ordinance, and the next meeting, you'd be able to approve the ordinance, and you'd be able to approve a resolution that also includes the no bikes on the field rule.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I just have a comment, I, I'd like to understand why they want to have prohibition of bikes on, uh, riding onto the field, right? It's something that seems, I mean, has there been a problem? It seems like it's harmless to me, um, something I enjoy doing as a kid, so I, I don't know why, why we want for that kid from the future from doing that.
Manager Bryant?
Sure, um, Councilor Weissford, um, the challenge with that is unfortunately it does damage the field, especially the, um, you know, especially like the baseball field and the little football field area, and that does create, uh, maintenance for, um, both the Public Works Department and the Norbert Athletic Association.
Yeah, I've heard that.
Okay, thanks, thanks, thanks so much for that, for that, I understand.
Mr. Bush? Sorry. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 That's unanimous. A H.
H, I, uh, move that we advertise ordinance 1037 for Borough Manager duties.
Second?
Second.
Counselor Pananopoulos, discussion? What is this in regards to?
Well, again, sorry. Since this is about me, I won't, uh, spend too, too long, uh, speaking on this matter, just, the general background is, um, in, uh, some previous meetings, you know, council and the, uh, Finance Administration Committee, uh, you know, we realized there was some lack of definition in regards to the role and responsibility of the Borough Manager, uh, so, uh, Finance Administration instructed Mr. Walco to put together an ordinance to provide better definition of that, and again, since this is about me, I'm going to be looking at Mr. Walco to speak to what that ordinance entails.
Thank you.
There was an existing ordinance that had the manager's duties already listed. I think that the manager's duties ordinance probably was never amended from the original passing of the Norbert Borough Code, so it was in due for, for revisions.
Yes.
I've done these, uh, at other municipalities we've represented, uh, that, that provides more details to actually the, the manager's roles nowadays and, and the day-to-day operation. It's a good tool for the manager to have, to, to know what she is responsible to do, or he or she is responsible to do, anybody in the future. Uh, it's also a good tool for council to see, you know, what is the manager's role, uh, and it's good for the public to know exactly what's the job of the manager is to do as well. So, uh, it is, uh, itemized, uh, pretty extensively, it's still somewhat broad, uh, in, in respects, so it's almost like a, an employment as well. But these are all, uh, these are all jobs and duties that are usually reserved for the manager. Um, there is a language here that gives the manager the ability to do it, point P. Um, we'll also be amending briefly the Assistant Manager's duties, uh, to clarify that when the manager's not present, that the duties, if, if it's designated by council, the manager goes into Assistant Manager as well, if that was not in their role. Um, I believe Brian has looked through these, there's nothing objectional, uh, for coming into this role, um, and like I said, these are standard provisions, I didn't draft these from nowhere, I've taken them from locations of work and sort of designed some of the, the best, best operations. Mayor?
Um, so currently, we don't technically have an Assistant Manager, uh, Michelle is serving this, uh, a separate role, so this is just in, in the event somebody fills out?
Yeah, presumably, again, there, there already is a provision in the code for the Assistant Manager.
Okay.
So we're just expecting that that role would be so.
Ultimate, uh, ultimately, okay.
Yeah, and, um, I mean, you know, hopefully not, but there's any situation which, uh, I'm incapacitated or the like, um, you know, you know, we can, or by no means, that's it, we can sort that out in advance, so.
Great. Any further discussion?
I'm not saying that happening.
No, it's hope not.
Oh, it never happens.
Uh.
I, I just noticed it does clarify the hiring process.
Yes.
Which is helpful, thank you.
Yes, all right, thank you. All in favor of A H? Aye. All right.
Aye.
Thank you.
He's really good.
Oh, pass, okay, uh, unanimous. We'll move to nine A, the reports have been submitted. Do we have any committee updates? I'll start with Finance and Administration.
Um, sure, thanks everyone, this is a good segue. So Finance and Administration looked at two evaluation tools, the first is in fact, um, a process and a tool to evaluate the Borough Manager. Um, Samantha, I'll let you read the temperature of the room, folks, if you would like to see that tool, uh, Samantha can put that up on the screen for you, we'll see, if not, I'm happy to send you a link. Essentially, uh, what Michelle Carroll did under the advisement, recommendation of SNA is, is just take the Borough Manager doc, job description that we created, and create both, both a quantitative and qualitative assessment tool, where we can, uh, evaluate the Borough Manager on those job duties with room for explanation or a narrative, um, to go with each of those duties. What SNA is proposing is that at the six-month mark, um, the Borough Manager self-assess, and then turn that self, self-assessment over to council for us to review. So, uh, in other words, it, it's a formative assessment at the six-month mark. At the yearly review, we will have a consistent tool that the council will complete, again, on those identified Borough Manager job duties, with both a quantitative life rate scale and then a qualitative narrated, um, narrative P. If, if you want to see that tool, Samantha can pop that up, if not, uh, I'm happy to share that link, but it really is built directly from the Borough Manager job description. Oh, or Michelle, Michelle Carroll, I'm sorry.
There it is.
Um, Michelle, you, you created it, if you want to, I mean.
Why don't we just, why don't we just slowly scroll? Let's slowly just scroll through it here. I know council members obviously have access to this, to consider on their own and pick up questions, um, but this does give the, the public an opportunity to see how we are evaluating the manager.
Okay, and Aaron, if I can also point out, this is a new tool that we use, uh, in Teams, where we're not using a Survey Monkey or, or a Google Doc, uh, which is significant in the fact that no individual owns this tool or the data collector from this tool, rather, we're just really streamlining it, uh, through existing Norbert software, and thank you to Michelle Carroll, who really took time to kind of explore how to do this, we'll just, it's going to be really easy, it's going to be a link, it aggregates the responses, it'll give us a really clear, clean assessment, I mean, I'm sorry, collection of data.
Great. Uh, Michelle, I'll ask you to.
Okay.
Keep scrolling at the rate you are, um, and Council Records, is there anything else for your committee?
Um, I do, just briefly, the next is our comprehensive plan requires us to evaluate, uh, the plan at this point, so, uh, Finance and Administration has identified, uh, the high priority of cap, and created a tool much like this, where in the next week, council members will be asked to please complete the comprehensive plan and evaluate much like this tool. Um, did we complete it, is it in progress, uh, did it exceed the expectation? And it will allow us to give notes on where the project is, where the pitfalls. Uh, once we all assess that comprehensive plan, we'll aggregate the, that data, uh, and we talked about, uh, Ms. Bryant would, would kind of co-host and facilitate a town hall with the Norbert Civic Association, really to give us an opportunity of, we wrote this comprehensive plan, it's community-driven, it was community-crafted, council-screwed it, let's now, again, do a formative and summative assessment on where we've gone and what we need to do.
Okay.
And, um, that's fine, Michelle, I, I think we've gotten attention.
No, no, we're going to see this. No, no, we're seeing this through, you made this.
I can't read it.
Uh, actually, if.
Ms. Bryant?
Now, with Councilon Records, I may also add, just to clarify, um, the link will be sent to council in the future, you won't just have a week to do it, you would have, um, I think we were talking, what, until the end of September is when we're looking for responses?
Correct, yeah, so we'll get you this link in the next week, and then we'd like to ask, uh, you to do it in a month's time, uh, so we can look at that data and then plan that fall, kind of town hall with community to understand, again, you know, where we, where we've gone and where we need to go.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for your committee?
One last, uh, thing, we had for some time talked about a grant process, we put it on the back burner, uh, tonight at SNA, we talked a little bit about how we should have a strategic grant process, which clearly ties capital improvement, uh, project, comprehensive plans, where we should be able to map how we're going to strategically go for grant funds and how it ties, um, to goals, uh, or needs of the community. Uh, it was in the back burner, and Brian brought it to our attention, uh, and really started to create a process where she identified it was a reasonable expectation for Borough Board size, actively engaged from anywhere to three to five, uh, grants, uh, and also raised that, you know, I mean, to be honest and transparent, one of the reasons, the thing that we as council were excited about with this prime, as well as her, her really impressive grant record, uh, one of the great points that she brought up tonight at SNA, was a lot of that is about cultivating relationships and really being strategic about that, uh, we talked a little bit about that at SNA, and, you know, the EV Charter is a great opportunity for us to really celebrate Norbert and fight elected political positions and wars, uh, that it behooves us to have good relationships with. Um, alternatively, uh, when Ms. Bryant hits grant, she'll bring it to SNA, we will merely just map it, to does this map to the capital improvement plan, to the comprehensive plan, if so, that's diverted back to the office, uh, where we can also help, where, I'm sorry, it will go to the committee, you know, it is infrastructure grant, public health and safety, SNA, and then we'll also identify who are the resources in the community that could really be thought partners in the grant. The Borough, of course, will submit the grant, manage the grant, give responsibility for the grant, uh, but really there was an acknowledgement, much like the bike grant, Michelle, where the, the Norbert Cycle, uh, had an expertise that saved the office a tremendous amount at an opportunity cost. So we as a council can identify, uh, community members that can really help with some of that heavy lifting. Uh, those are the three major points, thank you.
Thank you. Infrastructure Committee.
So there are a couple items that we've been discussing and haven't, can we discuss some of those that came up today, other things include, we are looking into the possibility of a temporary.
Excuse me.
Sorry, I'll talk louder.
Can, can, no, somehow the owl is not turning to see Fred. The owl needs to turn to see Fred, it's just not working. Since we're in a running end of the board.
Hello, owl, can you hear me?
Talk super loud.
It is not, okay.
No, the owl has stuck up his shov, basically, the whole evening.
Oh, oh.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Whoa, great. That is, that's interesting, uh, all right. So we are looking into the possibility of, um, a skate park trial, uh, we have had initial inspections done of the equipment, and now we're having public work staff look into, uh, some of, you know, some of the logistics of setting this up locally, uh, so I think we're asking, you know, we're, we're going to come back with two proposals, one of which will be installing temporary fencing and putting it up in the Savine Avenue parking lot, and the other will be using the tennis courts, um, taking them down for, for tennis courts, as I recall, that was the discussion. So we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, discuss those proposals in more detail and bring them to, uh, to council once they've been fleshed out. No? Um, I, that's, I'm pretty sure that's what we agreed on. Michelle is, is shaking her head.
No, I, I.
I think that's the way I remember it.
That's okay.
Okay, um, and the second item is outdoor dining, so, uh, as, uh, John Walco pointed out, our, our ordinance, um, enabling outdoor dining, particularly the use of the street, uh, has expired, the temporary, uh, permission has expired, so we are looking into whether we should make that permanent. To that end, we, uh, we asked for, uh, some polling of the public, so Michelle Carroll created a poll and has been gathering information, uh, from members of the public about their, their thoughts on outdoor dining and whether they think it's working or not, and then we're gonna use that information to guide our discussion, um, next month, so.
Okay.
That's infrastructure.
All right, and public safety.
Okay, uh, we met in the first week of August, and since then, of course, the Delta situation has developed rapidly, so we are all monitoring that with the county, but, um, as a committee, we wouldn't return to that till the first week of September, so just something to press to all be aware of this council, if, if we do want to take some sort of action, um, in September. if we do want to take some sort of action in September. Also, we have, with the help of the manager, we have been developing a draft process for traffic complaints. And at our next meeting in September, we will be talking with manager and our police chief about that in more detail. But we're very pleased with the draft, you know, as a committee, and we hope to bring it to council within the next month or so. And the idea here is that, once the process is established, we could address many traffic complaints in a fair and equitable way, rather than as a one-off, you know. So we're pleased to be developing that process, so thank you to our manager. Also, we are working with the EAC. They are developing a set of proposals they hope to bring to us in September or October for how to best spend the remaining funds in the Climate Action Plan implementation budget line. I know that the EAC has also been working with the manager and with our equally consultants to develop a climate action monitoring plan so that we can measure our progress. So I'm very pleased about that. We are planning a formal launch for the EV charging station, September 10th, with ribbon cutting. And this would be a public event with many people invited, including everyone here. I believe that's set for 5:00 on September 10th. The LED streetlight project, we understand is about to begin within the next few weeks. And I think the price crossing issue, I think, has been resolved. So I think that's most of it.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments for the good of council? Mr. Bush?
So the Delta variant is out there, it is incredibly infectious. If you are unvaccinated and you are eligible for a vaccine, please, please consider going and getting vaccinated immediately. COVID rates are increasing in Montgomery County despite maybe 75% of eligible adults being vaccinated, so they're spreading primarily among the unvaccinated. I've seen public health officials saying that herd immunity is impossible because Delta is just so infectious. So really, your best bet is, the only way, you know, everyone is going to get it. I've seen public health officials making that claim. And really, the only option to improve your situation is going to be to get the vaccine. Now, I hope it doesn't get to quite that level. I personally do not look forward to getting COVID, but please get vaccinated.
Thank you. Under new business, item 10, we need a motion to advertise for the council vacancies. I don't need a motion, we can just advertise for the council vacancies. I imagine there's no opposition to advertising for our vacancy. So, member of the public, if you are out there and you have always wondered about the opportunity to sit at this table, or you already serve your borough on one of the various boards and commissions and think you are ready for a new leadership challenge, we will encourage you to submit your letter of interest to the Borough Manager or to Michelle Carroll. And something will go up on the website with, you know, a clickable link and instructions on how to do that. Council will be making a decision about the appointment of a new member at the September meeting, and that person will be seated at the September meeting. We are required by law to move this process along very quickly. Do you have a comment?
No, I have something for new business.
Just as a point, the September meeting is currently scheduled on 15th, which is Yom Kippur, Yom Kippur, so I believe there.
The meeting, I believe, is going to be re-advertised as moved to the 22nd.
Yes.
September 22nd. Other new business?
I meant to look into this before coming to the meeting, I forgot. Do we have a process in place for drafting the description of who, of what we need? Because our people will serve on the hard, they're probably going to advertise and select those people, because if they're meeting, I mean, I think that that story commission meeting is September 8th, 9th, I want to say? And at that point, you know, if our ordinance is in effect, we need to have a process for probably appointing the hard in September. I wonder if we're delegating the drafting of the description to the planning commission, or how we're going to advertise and do that.
That's a great question.
We also need to decide how many people. I mean, that was something that was left out of the ordinance, so.
Mr. Walco?
There are some requirements of some of the background characteristics of people needing to be on the hard, but there are any ordinance. But apart from that, there isn't anything that council is constrained from that ordinance about how the process of taking that numbers, as you mentioned, that you want to have on the hard. So it really is something that's just administratively how you want it.
Okay, well, the first question would be, how many people?
It's a minimum of five, one of which has to be, well, one is basically a mechanic, you know, probably. I mean, a building inspector, one has to be a real estate broker, right? Not agent of work, but.
I have to look for.
I think that's what it says.
And then three have to learn, a minimum. And it could be more than that. I mean, maybe we should leave that open.
Why don't we, why don't we start with five?
Right.
We can always increase it at the will of council, is that right?
Correct.
So I think five, five is the number. Fred?
Sure, I mean, I wouldn't want to go past seven. I think five or seven would be reasonable. I would want a group of nine.
Let's start with five, let's fill those five slots. Let's have a torrent of applicants who want to volunteer for this and go from there. But in terms of qualifications, Ms. Brian, is that something maybe you could prepare for council via email based on other communities?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You know, we could put that together and then, you know, let council know how we're about advertising it and work to get those applications sent for the September council meeting, yeah. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Do we need to have this in place in September? Can I give an extra mark? Need to be ready.
We don't, I don't, we may or may not, but we probably should have the ordinance in effect and there is a potential that somebody can run a project that requires them to be on the hard. It's unlikely, but.
I think you should definitely be starting this process right now. That was very apt to bring it up, it happens in October instead of September.
So.
Okay.
Just one other item of new business. We have mentioned this in our committee, Public Health Safety, but the idea of discussing the allocation of time and money to the inspector, you know, increasing that allocation, given the needs that we have as new ordinance is fast. You know, governing units, the safety, the building, etc. So that's just a conversation, you know, leave that to the council leadership and the manager, where it would fit in the workflow. But it's something as a committee, I think we would like to initiate.
My recommendation there would be for the manager to consider what that looks like, and when we come to council with the budgetary ideas, that's, that will be where it fits in. And then we could, a group could have a discussion about, maybe we aim too high, or we got it just right, or.
All right, any other new business? Yes, Mr. Bush?
Talking a lot today. I think I brought this up with several years, but I like the idea of Norbert providing incentive for vaccinations. Prelimarily talking about whether we can offer a gift certificate that would be usable in members of the Norbert Business Association for people to go and get their vaccines, here or not. I'm going to continue to look into whether this is feasible, but just thought I'd bring that up during new business. Possibly next month, I'll flush that to the board.
Okay. Any other new business? Any old business? Do you anticipate that we will need to take council action following the executive session?
I'm still waiting here. Actually, yes, there's one that would require a budget amendment.
Okay, well, we will adjourn into executive session, we will put the Zoom on hold, and then we will return to public session, possibly taking some council action.
Michelle and Cal Marie, just in case anyone is stood away from your computer, we are back in session here. And just in case Michelle is away from her computer, I'm going to take minutes and notes as well.
Thank you. First order of business, at the request of the solicitor, I would like to answer your question, Cal Marie. Cozen or Connor is not John Walco's bills. He is not connected to those bills. Those are the labor attorney for police matters. Now, we have two questions. Can I get a motion to authorize a pay increase for the chief of police?
I move to authorize a pay increase for the chief of police.
In the amount of? Do I need to do that?
It's 10%.
10%.
10%.
Of 10%.
In the amount of 10%. Retroactive to May 31st, the May 31st pay period.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Can I get a motion to accept this settlement with, no, we're not doing that one.
No, PICA.
PICA?
Yeah. I need a budget allocation of $15,000 for our streetlight budget to settle everything with the forest out of streetlights.
Is there a motion? Someone moved.
Yeah, I know we allocate $15,000 for the PICA resolution.
Is there a second? Second, second by Michelle, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Is that all of our business?
If you voted for the chief, or you're giving, if you want to give a last change for the chief.
Well, I kind of bear some say approval, pay for yourself, yeah.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, you waited too long.
Good night.
Good night.
That's all good.